Okay. We said the pledge of belief.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh. Changes to the agenda. Saying that, we'll move on to public comments one.
All right, this is Nicholas Handy, Communications Coordinator. Policy is up on the screen for remote and in-person audience. Feel free to just familiarize yourself with that policy before making any sort of public comment. If you are remote, you can do so by using the hand raise feature, which should be located at the bottom of whatever screen you're watching us at. You press that, we can allow you to speak first, last name and town of residence before making any comment.
Okay, thank you, Nick. So we give people a minute or two to. Look at that and weigh in.
All right, I'm not seeing anybody at this time.
Okay. Well, good, then we'll have a second chance for public comments later in the meeting. And then that will bring us to the superintendent's report.
All right, well, this is the first week of, you know, the beginning of it, but the first week of summer vacation. Last Thursday was the final day for our learners. We've had over the past couple of weeks, we've had the graduation of our seniors that was held over at the field. It was a very nice evening, a little windy, but it was very nice. And then, of course, we had three other events this past week, which were two elementary or fifth grade celebrations. One at RMS, one at JGS. Those were both held the same evening, you know, in the future, I think we'll start to look at if we can separate them a little bit more so that more of us can attend, or is that we can attend more of the sessions as opposed to having to jump from one location to another location. Both were very nice. And then the eighth grade was the culmination of all. Special thanks to Mr. Handy, our communications coordinator, who made sure that especially the events at the eighth grade graduation, the JGS, but they especially the event at the high school. The field took a lot more planning because of the distance away from the electrical outlets and so forth, and trying to make sure that sound was just right and not getting feedback. So he's out there a long time. I think it was reported that he had like thirty-five or thirty-seven thousand steps or something like that during the setup of that day. Went back and forth, it was pretty, pretty impressive. We'll get the facts on that one later on to make sure that we have the right, right number there, but it was pretty impressive. His patience was admirable. We will be having an education committee meeting in the early or it will be sometime in July, I would expect. And that will be looking at data, student data. We'll try to meet this week with Leslie, my administrative assistant, to again, look at how we can develop good systems of data reporting, getting the right type of software, which we might have already, but the right type of software to make sure that we are able to not just look at proficiency or not proficiency or even growth, but we want to look at correlations. Again, very, always very difficult to show causation with anything, but we can see some correlations between attendance, how well they're doing in class, their grades and their assessment results. Perhaps, you know, even looking at down, not so much for a, an education committee meeting, but for some other types of purposes, looking at absentee rate of teachers, you know, so how, how many, how many classes did they, you know, miss instruction from the core instructor during that timeframe, whether it be for leaving for professional development reasons or because of this year COVID had an impact on some of it. So just so that we have some information about that and kind of comparing and contrasting. Also looking at, we had a pretty good year with activities and athletics overall, but you know, what is that doing to our learners and their outcomes from an academic standpoint? Because when we think of student athletes, it's student athletes or students prior to being athletes. Not that one is, you know, the athletic piece can teach habits of mind perhaps better than they can teach within a school setting. Because if you're working on a team and you're being collaborative, you know, those, those skills go on for life and are very valuable. That's what we look for when you hire people is are they collaborative? So wanting to make sure that kids are involved in team, team sports. And I think Charlie sent a, I think one time we, or we talked about the fact that we, we research out there or the literature anyway on team, of being involved in team versus individual sports. So it's, you know, we're, we're looking at that, we want to find out, you know, what's, what's the picture of the, of the really successful or maybe we have a variety of pictures of successful JRMS, CHS or in the, the Jaffrey School District students. So what's, what's, what's that picture? What can we be communicating the families, hey, if we do more of this, we'll get more of this. Or if we do less of something, we're going to get more of something else. So I'm excited about the work that we're going to be doing and the planning over the course of the summer.
Okay, does anybody have questions for Ruben? Okay. Well, Ruben, thank you for, for the update. Congratulations on the closing of the school year and successful closing and a nice closing ceremony.
Remember what Ruben just talked about, because we still have to have a dashboard next year. And we want to identify the things that are important that we on a dashboard so we can keep track of and measure.
Good.
You know, one, one thing that's also pushing that conversation more from another side of things is we will be, the state has now just finally chosen and officially done so, Alma as the student information system throughout the state. We've been holding off because WebtoSchool was not a very good student information system, but rather, and we have, we'd actually met with Alma before when we're looking at LMS's learning management systems, because they do, they're pretty powerful and they can do some of the things that the learning management system can do. But the state has gone with that, so there's like a thirty-four percent reduction in costs because it's like, it's kind of done statewide bid. And there are some add-ons, we're meeting with them, I think Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday, just for a touch base, half an hour, hour meeting to talk about the software, how, what the implementation process should look like a year from now. So not paying for WebtoSchool, they're paying for Alma in the process. And then they have some added, the add-ons that have to do with data dashboards that get updated in real time. So I don't know what, what it looks like or what it entails. It might just be individual student data, not, you know, group information. Nevertheless, they chose Alma because of the way they can grab data from the system for this, for the purpose of the statewide reporting.
All right, good, that's big news too. So with that, we are on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion and we accept the consent agenda?
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you, Lucet.
Nice, Paul. Before you vote on that, can I just say, thank you, Michelle Durand. So she's given a lot to this, this organization and I'm excited actually for when and I wish she would maybe the writing teacher another year. We had some very nice results in that reading, writing pilot that we did this year in sixth grade. And I think she's a large contributor to that, that specifically, but also to the team. She brings, she's, she's done a lot for, for the district, so.
Tremendous asset and she's tried different things for us and accomplished quite a bit while she was here.
I agree, when I saw her name, I was sad to see her go. She's one of the best. Love to work with her. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you for those comments. Couldn't agree more. All right, so on that note, all those in favor of the motion?
Hi.
Hi.
Right? Opposed? So that carries seven zero. All right, very good. And then we are on to policy review. I will see GBCD, background investigation and criminal history records check, second reading.
I'll make a motion, adopt policy GBCD.
Okay.
Second.
Charlie, thank you for staying. Any discussion? No, okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Okay, that carried seven zero, zero. And now board committee updates.
Where do you want to start?
Why don't we start with facilities?
So facilities, they met today. There is a lot of progress going on right now with the HVAC systems. A lot of work getting done this summer, so we should finish all of phase one. And he started on phase two, JGS started on all the electrical work. I believe right now, Ringe has most of their materials on hand with exception of maybe one rooftop unit. So they should be able to get all those installed prior to the start of school year next year. They said with the exception of that one, they might have to do it on nights or weekends to maintain proper safety. Stuff that we talked about, going out for new bids for plowing and sanding. So they're going to be creating a new rec for that, posting it. Charlie, anything else I missed? You are actually John.
Just mentioned that Turner presumably, well, we, we, we've been assured that Turner is working on the assets assessments and they're scheduled to be done by the thirtieth of June. And well, like you said, the big news was about the progress of the HVAC project.
And how they dealt with the transformers.
Yeah. So we were fortunate with that, right?
Right.
We were told today that if you order a transformer right now, it's a year. We're giving you a date over a year.
Until you receive them?
Yeah.
Oh dear.
Which is crazy.
But we already have a transformer. So we got in before that supply chain.
Good.
And we, we met with Steve. How, I'm going to get his last name wrong.
Stick with Steve.
Yeah, our clerk of the works.
Yes.
He seemed very knowledgeable and very good. He told us about not only the progress, but what are the things that he's looking at and, you know, the decision points or the places where we need to be paying attention. Sounds like the project is in good hands.
Oh, and the issue of the dust collection was brought up in the wood shop. We're going to start looking into that as well, get proper ventilation in the wood shop.
That's right. Yeah, thank you, that's a, that's a good point and we're hopeful that, you know, maybe some state or federal funding might become available this year. We've had a couple of instances of that in previous years. And so we want to be prepared, so we'll be looking at prices for trying to get that filtration system identified and then get the funds.
There is ten million dollars that's been approved for school security. That was press, I haven't read the whole thing, the press release came in, so that's something also that we're looking at from a facility standpoint. We talked a little bit about school security. We also talked about the ongoing efforts to get money back from FEMA. It's still in the process, that's the good thing. And the so funny because I can't remember Steve's last name either, it's bothering me. But we don't need to, you know, go there. There were, there was another specific thing that, oh, the, the professional development is going to be taking place for our maintenance staff to be able to do the glycol in the pipes themselves, which is a very significant support for our district. One, it makes us sustainable. Two, it saves us an incredible amount of money as long as we do it properly.
And thank goodness that John was aware of this as a issue and checked and realized that we were deficient before we had a problem.
Right, right. John is really kept on top of a lot of things and including bringing Steve Horton, the clerk of the works.
Get it to let in there.
That was, that was a nice, smooth way.
Wow.
All right, so.
Education Committee, we're not meeting this month, there was two, two, there were too many things going on, so we'll resume again in July. So we'll have more information in July. Policy Committee also postponed their meeting last week and will be meeting in July.
Okay, great. And the finance committee?
Finance, folks, longer meeting.
June's busy.
Finance wanted to postpone.
Yeah. We met on the sixteenth and according to my notes, we looked at the year end balance. With two hundred forty-five K may be left at the end of the year. It costs two hundred and twenty-five K for retiring buybacks, but we're not going to be able to pay the retiring buybacks because of the cash flow issue.
And because of the food.
The overage in the food service, we have to not spend certain amounts of money from the budget because we went over in that revenue area.
So then we discussed where some of the shirt falls were, insurance, food services and payroll. And then we talked about the, as far as cash that we owe. And then we talked about cash needed and, you know, when it was needed in order to maintain a positive cash flow balance. So we still don't know for sure exactly what we're going to end up with at the end of the year. We'll, we'll be told that at next month's meeting.
Carrie's doing a lot of juggling.
Man, it's weird. Carrie is the guardian of the vault, so she'll make sure everything happens. Okay, we also talked about the sped, the special education trust fund. And there's about two hundred fifty-five K left in there. But I don't know how much they'll be at the end of the year, but it's not going to be the seventy-five K that we put in and it won't be completely depleted. We talked a little bit about tuition for non-resident students and some of the things that we'd have to look at in order to determine what, what that cost factor would be, things like ATC courses, adequacy aid, transportation, specialty, those kinds of things. So we're going to have an ongoing discussion about that when we have the time. And when Carrie's not doing an audit, we'll try to collect the data that we need to do to figure out what to propose to the board in terms of a tuition rate if we're going to have one. Carrie also went over a a proposal to cap the workers' compensation at ten percent. It's a three-year contract and what that would do is ensure that our workers' comp didn't exceed ten percent. There were some times in the past where it had been fifteen, one time fifteen percent and other times ten percent. Recently, it was below ten percent, but, but this would do is keep it from going over for the next two, three years.
Yeah, she said she wanted to present that to us, which gets back from, boy, she's off vacation right now.
Anyway, the work, the finance committee did support that, so whenever she presents it, the finance committee will support it. Anybody have anything else to add?
That was a good, good summary.
Okay.
And you have anything on the wellness committee?
Other than they ate everything it was put before them.
All right, very good. And goals committee?
Not me to talk.
Okay, good. All right, very good. Well, we're up to public comments too, every minute she goes.
Yeah.
All right, I'll put the public comments policy back on the screen. Again, same rules as last time, first, last name, town or residence, make sure you know the policy and use the hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen to be acknowledged. All right, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, very good, thank you, Nick. And then on to board matters. And in, in this past week, in the effort to try to deal with some issues that came to the board from the public and then in our efforts to try and respond, we had a number of right to know procedure slip-ups, I guess. And I'll raise my hand as being right in there, I, I did one of them, I did a reply law to an email from another member of, of, of our board and it, it's, it's easy to do, but we, people realize that it's not something that we should continue, should continue to do. So we put that on the agenda just to begin to re-educate ourselves, remind ourselves that, you know, the, these are important issues and but it's really hard in the electronic age, you know, we're so used to using email for everything, but right to know law is important foundation of our, of our, of our, our legal system in the state and so it's something we need to pay attention to. We, we do have a the, have an offer from the attorney from the school board association to come and speak to us at some point. And so I'm going to see if we can schedule something for for that person to come in and give us an opportunity to ask questions about any number of policies that we might be aware of and maybe not have complete clarity on.
He's going to come in, hopefully you guys like a nice little opening, because some of us might not even know the questions to ask.
I was just thinking that.
Well, we could always assign ourselves some homework to take a look at some of those documents that Nick always downloads from the webinars.
Right.
And, you know, it, it can be hard to find time or a busy lives, but a quick review of that when we know that there's someone scheduled to come in might help us all get prepared.
Is there a cost associated with this?
Well, of course.
Associated with having the any HSBA come here?
But no, I don't, I don't believe will cost us anything. We're, we're already members and we, we pay an annual fee. Pretty sure it's covered under that, but I will clarify.
Besides that, there's webinars and actual attendees, you can actually attend some of these things. Okay, I'm fairly familiar with ninety-one A. So I'm not sure that there's a a lot that I could do except get in a discussion with the attorney about case law, because the RSA is quite clear, but there's case law that under, underlies that and if the attorney's aware of the case law, then I'd probably get in a discussion with that, but otherwise.
Well, you know, I've already mentioned to at least a few people that those annual kid or law conferences that you have attended so you know, rigorously over the years, I'm sure that's where you've learned at least some of what you know. You're obviously a very important resource to the board on those issues, but there's no reason the rest of us can't also, you know, try and get a little bit more up to speed on.
Absolutely.
All right.
That's another board matter and probably should be later. Ruben, can you update us on staffing and how staffing is going as far as gaps and hiring?
Well, I didn't prepare for that entirely, I can give you a rough idea. So we have, at the elementary school, we have several two to three positions that we need to hire at Jeffrey Grade School in the area of elementary education. Special education here at the middle school and high school, we have several openings. So that's the both learning centers, intensive learning centers, middle school and high school as well as, I believe, special ed case managers. We have some associates, you have a need for instructional associates mostly at the elementary schools, mostly at RMS. RMS staffing from a teacher standpoint is pretty good. They're going to need to now hire a preschool teacher with Courtney Cadlec's resignation, that was what she was going to do. So that has been posted and moving forward with that. And hunt for nurse, a nurse there as well, but we're well on the path of interviewing at RMS. So at, for other positions, well, we're going to need to hire a writing teacher, sixth grade. And a looks like we're going to need a health teacher because we'll be looking to move the health teacher who is certified as an English language arts teacher into that realm through that process. So that's what, that's what appears that we have right now, I think. That's middle school, high school. So we, we have several that we need to continue to look for. Special ed is, is the big one.
Um, I ask because this is a good time for you to be able to hire quickly without waiting for board meetings to first. And I would be okay with giving you the leeway for the timeframe to hire without the board approval, wait for meetings so you could have immediate hire. But I'm, so I'm, I would like to offer that, but I'm not sure the timeframe that we should, that we should offer.
Would like to remind the board that hiring is a board's responsibility. There's a check and balance. We cannot nominate anyone we want to hire them. And the superintendent, they cannot hire anyone unless he nominated, unless nominated by him. So there's a check and balance there. However, having said that, I spoke with my daughter in New York, she's a special ed teacher. She said they're going bananas in New York, they've got bounties on special ed teachers. She makes more money than probably anybody who is born.
Yeah.
And she's just, she's a, you know, she's a special ed teacher, but she's got all kinds of certifications. But anyway, getting back to, to the point you made, I would make an exception to that in this case. I would support giving the superintendent to immediately hire anybody he can get as a special ed teacher. We put a, we increased their salary a thousand dollars to try to, you know, ease the ability to get some, but apparently that's not working as well as we had hoped. So yeah, I would support giving the superintendent authority and, and I would say that given the authority until September first, but the bird, the board can review it at any time. So if we feel like reviewing it in the next board meeting, ask him what he's doing with hiring and it looks like he's got his special ed. That's what we might do since, I don't know, I have a bit else.
Thank you for that.
So I'll second.
Thank you for the language, so make a motion, because you can't make a motion, right? Okay. Make a motion, all right?
I couldn't make a motion, I thought you had it.
You have, so the motion will be to extend hiring privileges to superintendent without the You have, very good. So, the motion will be to extend hiring privileges to superintendent without the board approval to September first with a thousand dollar sign-on bonus for special education teachers. I heard it. I love it.
Well, that's in the contract. It's in the contract.
It's already there.
Yes, I'm assigned on bonus, but it is added. It's a, it's a differential.
So, they're, 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 when they're at the same step as this teacher, they get.
That's already there.
Yeah.
Sounds so good to keep adding money.
The budget doesn't think so.
Paul's had a conversation with the budget lately, and the conversation says the budget doesn't really feel that good.
Finance Committee, okay, this was a contract that was negotiated with JREA and the voters.
No.
The legislative body approved it. We didn't approve it, so.
It's a good contract. So, what I'm hearing is the motion is providing the superintendent temporary hiring authority for special educate, for the area of special education up to September with the understanding that the board can revisit, revisit this decision or conversation that other board needs. Yeah. And then Charlie seconded that.
Is that how that went? Okay. Any, any further discussions? All right, then, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Can I do one more?
Yes.
I'd like to look at the July.
Second to love discussion.
You'll like this one. Can we look at the July calendar for school, for board meetings and make a decision on whether we have two back-to-back in the middle of July? When not everybody's here, or have just one July and adjust our calendar for July?
Currently, it's the eleventh and the eighteenth.
And when are you, when are you out with them?
I gotta look again, but I think yes. It got changed, so I don't know. I think here's my, here's a thought, is that a lot of the work that we have to do during this month is, or even during the summertime, is hiring. And so, we can always call some, you know, see if we can form, come together and hire those non-special ed teachers at different times. We'll still have the committee meetings going on. The Education Committee is gonna, people are gonna wanna go to that anyway, even the board will be in the audience. But I would imagine, so keeping it the eighteenth, if you were gonna go down to one. Giving a little more time so that, you know, the July fourth week, because we'll have started, well, we'll have something to report out on during that timeframe about ESY and summer tutoring and all that kind of stuff going on, which hasn't begun. We'll begin on the fifth. And we'll also have an HR manager in place at that time, too.
And we're hoping to have the job fair.
And hope, and give us time to get that job fair developed, advertised, and quicker, yeah.
Well, I'm okay with not doing the eighteenth. I'm a little bit leery about stretching anything into August, because it's prior to start a school. And it's a timeframe when we wanna make sure that there's readiness for all of the things we have to do in the area of PD, in the area of school start.
I think Ruben was saying to keep.
It has to be the eighteenth, I thought he said.
What?
I think Ruben's recommended, or his suggestion, if we were to get rid of one, he suggested we get rid of the eleventh and keep the eighteenth. I mean, just check on something real fast.
Well, the eighteenth is followed up by the first, which is two weeks. That gives us one, two, three, it's four weeks between now and the next.
Summer vacation. I'm just kidding.
I raised this question earlier before we started our non-public meeting. I'm a member of a trip that's planned between the eighth and the eighteenth, which basically keeps me unavailable for both of those, both the eleventh and the eighteenth. And that's just the way it goes, but I regret it, you know. To me, I guess I'd rather misjudge one meeting, right?
Well, if Ruben causes to hire for getting a porn, you best show up, though. It's before the eleven.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there you go. So, you're showing for that at least.
It's the week of the twenty-fifth that I wouldn't want to have anything.
Right.
They wouldn't.
I'll make a motion that we eliminate the July eleventh school board meeting and simply have a formal school board meeting on the eighteenth.
I second that.
Okay, you have a motion and second? Any discussion?
Yes. I think that waiting four weeks before our next board meeting and then having one two weeks after that is a large gap. And I would rather see us meet on the eleventh, which is in one, two, three weeks. And then again, on the August first, which is three weeks after the eleventh. So, that's from my perspective, I, I think that, you know, trying to have an equal distance.
But does that give us enough time to get the job fair in order, get all those interviews, so we can try to line that up a little bit better, so we can?
Well, when is the job fair?
That's what, we haven't planned it yet.
Yeah.
So, that's why we were saying the eighteenth, because we want to be able to have the job fair relatively close, if not on the same day, so we could extend offers more rapidly.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Do we want to extend offers without references? I mean, how would that?
Yeah, it depends what they have for references. Yeah, I mean, you might be right. It might be, that just might be too much to do all at one time. We might have to check references and so forth.
Sketchy to have people working with kids without having the references from each other.
Might, it might be sketchy.
Um, I'm, I feel great about the equity of changing to the eleventh, about amending my motion to say the eleventh. That sounds equitable.
I'm still seconding, but I can't make it feel up.
So, the motion would be to hold a meeting on the eleventh, but not on the eighteenth. The next one would be on the first.
So, Lisa's motion, Kim seconded.
And so we've got a motion of the same motion or a second. So, thank you for the discussion, Charlie, your comments. Any more discussion than all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Right? Okay. Motion carries. I, I keep saying seven zero zero, but I realize six zero zero.
Figured he'd do it.
Yeah, right, right.
That question. Just wanted to bring it up. Don't know if it's moot point or not. You guys were discussing hiring authority for Ruben, and I guess just as a reminder, you did have a previous motion for non-professional staff hiring authority. That's gonna lapse at the end of the year, and I didn't know if that was anything that needed to be revisited or not. So, just wanted to bring it up as a reminder.
All right, Charles. The superintendent has authority for non-professional staff. The only thing a board cannot, cannot, has authority to hire professionals, quote, professionals. So, as a board, are, we're the only ones who can hire professionals. Superintendent can hire everybody else.
Yeah, I think actually what we said was hourly staff, and so that ran into SNU positions during that timeframe. Yeah, so we'll keep it at, I think we're in good order at the SNU at this point, now that we have a chart coming our way. So, we keep the, the people who would be in the JRSSA. That's it, but still report out to be higher.
Now, if Lisa should request a third.
I like the second one. I'm not gonna.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We, we, um, so how do we, we're gonna do this? We, we want to move to, move back to non-public, we want to go into non-public.
We can move back to non-public.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. So, we need a motion to move back to non-public, right?
Yeah.
Motion to move back up, up to personnel. Or personnel.
Okay. And after we have a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Do we need a roll call vote to go into non-public?
All right, Christine?
Yes.
Charlie? Lisa?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I say yes, six zero zero, we'll go into non-public.